Are we ready? Why don't we go ahead and call this work session order? Welcome, Port of Columbia County. I started the meeting.
Sorry.
Oh, yeah, but he's going to give the gavel if he does it here. Please move your microphone to your face. Vaccinated or not? I don't know what the current guidance is. I do know that this muffles, so. So Alex, or do you want to? Get just a presentation from the port, right? To start, if you want to go?
Okay, well, I'll introduce. Good evening, City Council members. Thank you for the invite tonight. My name is Douglas Hayes. I'm the Executive Director for the Port of Columbia County. With me tonight, I have Commissioners Ward and Commissioners Erickson joining us. And what I like to do is just present you what the port's been up to recently, give you some projects that we have done, some things that may be on the horizon. And I'm going to stretch this all the way out to McNulty, which is just south of Walmart, because I think what happens there is also going to affect what happens here in Scapoo. So if you go to the next slide, please. A little something about the port, for those of you who don't know, when it was established and how large we are as a as an organization, 51 miles long along the Columbia River, approximately six miles wide from the river. We stretch from county border to county border. Our mission, economic development, diversity, provide improved financial returns, maritime, aviation, industrial, recreational, and port resources to support local and international commerce, and maintain environmental assets in the port district. Slide. And right here is a geographical representation of some of the port sites. And again, we'll be focusing in the south here. Scapoo's Airport, which I believe everyone's very familiar with. 5,100-foot runway, zoned as a public-use airport. You can see the long list of tenants there that we have. It's also located directly across the street from Omic. And go to the next slide. This is the recent project that has just been finished, a 31,500-square-foot hangar building with office space. Currently, this facility is in the running for a project called Project Icarus. Unfortunately, I can't tell you the details of Icarus, but I can tell you that it is a very heavy-employed business, roughly about 30 to 35 workers, if we are fortunate enough to get this project. Probably will not know the status of this for about another two weeks at the earliest. This project came to us through the state. Also just recently completed before we move on there, it was a water and sewer project, and that was actually in somewhat partnership with the City of Scapoo's too, and Scapoo staff, and we finished that just about two years ago. And that's to bring water and sewer out to the airport location. So no more reliance on septic tanks or wells out there. Okay, slide. Scapoo Spade Marine Park, located just north of here, roughly six miles from our current location. Of course, we have a boat launch there, very heavy on kayaking. I will tell you that since last year, the Marine Park has seen significant increase in traffic. Now, I think a lot of this is really due because of the COVID crisis. Certainly, people still want to go somewhere, but they don't necessarily want to travel far. So the perception of Scapoo's or St. Helens being close to Astoria by some folks in Portland, I've realized that we're not that far away at all. So last year, the Marine Park actually made money. This is something very rare in this type of this type of a facility. Yes, sir?
By the way, I want to thank the port for that awesome kayak launch you have there for us old guys.
You're certainly welcome. And I'm going to show you here in a minute. We have plans for additional space, so. To show you the amount of throughput that is happening here, from March this year until just last weekend, the port has had a throughput of 21,925 visitors to the Marine Park. Okay? That's how busy we're getting here. And so much so that we've actually started a redesign program for the Marina. If you go to the next slide, you can see what some of the drawings here are. It's a little hard to see because of the how small it is. But this is a four-year plan. Four years, basically, because we're going to have to do this when it's during off-season, so we can get some of the work done. But as you can see there, we're going to be adding everything from additional ADA parking to new kayak fingers, just to the south there, if you see in the picture. So what this means is we'll probably have a lot more visitors. I will say the one significant challenge we have is parking. My Commissioners know this very well, and it's something that my staff and I have been looking at as far as how to alleviate. Because I think even with this redesign of the parking, we're going to need more. So it's something that we are looking at. Slide. McNulty Creek Industrial Park, just south of Walmart. Why I'm mentioning this is because this is really going to affect Scapoo's too, because when it comes to traffic, certainly when we build something, usually people travel to go to work in these locations. I will say McNulty has, we have two industries looking to move here. One is Composites Universal Group. They are already a tenant of the ports. Currently, they're located at Multnomah Industrial Park, but they are looking to expand. So we are now working, LOI is actually complete. We're going to look to build a 48,000-square-foot production warehouse for them there, with the eventual building out to 90,000 square feet when they decide to make a full move from Multnomah to McNulty. But that's more along the lines of a five- to eight-year plan. We also have something called Project Flintstone. I can't tell you what that is. It's not a quarry, so I don't want people to think that. But it is something that would be very advantageous to the community. It's more along the lines of a recreational and/or retail-type business. And that's going to be a 16,000-square-foot facility with a plan to build out to 32,000, because what we're looking to do there is one of either two things. Of that additional 16,000 space is either a a county conference room as an option, or another industrial space for a potential tenant. We haven't decided yet, and something certainly the Commissioners will have a hand in. End slide. Most of you have probably heard about this program. All right, something that we started a little over a year ago. Again, this is a partnership with public agencies and private industry. This is a study to take a look at our rail and our highway system to try to alleviate some of the traffic that was already happening, but we certainly think is going to increase over the years. So we started this, Phase One was completed a little more than a year ago. Phase Two was supposed to start about this time last year, and then again, COVID hit us. So everything was put on pause. Phase Two is going to incorporate a public comment period, where the contractors that we have hired will brief the public and receive public input back as far as what they found. Now, we are going to kick-start Phase Two here the next month or two. What I'm waiting on before we decide to do that is a grant application that we sent to the state. Based upon the grant application will give us a better timeline than when we start this Phase Two. We should have an answer sometime in June, which if everything goes well, then we'll start at the end of June, beginning of July. Okay? That's just a rough timeline at this time. But you can see the partners there. A couple of things I will say, and what we did notice, and it's very important, I need to highlight that P&amp;W Rail is one of these partners. Certainly, we shouldn't be doing this if we can't have them as one of the partners. They're the experts. But one thing that we did find was the almost necessity in order to cut down on traffic is to start moving sidings away from cities such as St. Helens. Putting these switch stations and sidings somewhere else where a heavy concentration of vehicle traffic isn't slowed by manifest trains that are stopping in order to unhook or hook up new cars, so. There are a couple of locations that we've started to scout in order to move these switch stations. I won't say that here. I'll wait till the consultants and contractors talk to the public about it. Okay, slide. Challenges. Obviously, we talked about the traffic congestion on Highway 30. We think we have a plan for that. The other one is water. It's not so much an adequate water supply for Scapoo's. What is the, what's the plan? And the only reason I'm asking is as I talk to brokers, as I talk to potential tenants coming here, I just need to know what type of timeline and throughput we have for water. Because it allows me, two things I get asked all the time when I talk to brokers is what do utilities look like? Power, water, and housing. Those are the two things. Housing, actually, they're pretty pleased with. I know there's a plan. I know what that plan is, and I understand it. The one thing, and I'll certainly work with your staff on this, is what is the plan for water going forward? It's something that I I and my staff just need to know, so we can so we can with confidence tell brokers what they can expect to receive at any certain time based upon their plans to establish themselves there in the county, certainly in the city. All right, with that, I'm going to turn it over to see if my Commissioners have anything to say. And I guess we're just going to go into open discussion at this point. So any questions first?
Peter, did you have a question?
Well, I can provide some information regarding water. Alex and Laurie and Chris and Dave and I had a conference call last week with Ed Freeman and his attorney. They've told us that the well that they're designing and building is going to be online in the coming weeks. Certainly, they indicated before June 30th. The agreement that we have now contemplates 90-day test. So we can see how that well impacts our other wells on the site, give us an idea. The preliminary the preliminary data that we got from the hydrologist regarding that well was really good. It was quite favorable, I think, like around 148. Do phases A and B for the site? They need to do, I think, 74, between 74 and 75. Then anything beyond that would be credits. So for right now, we were looking, they said they're ahead of schedule as far as the well goes, and that we can be bringing that online. We, it's important for the city to run it during our driest months, so we can. You know, if they were to bring it on in November during heavy rains, when there's no demand, then, you know, that skews the number. So we there's a few little things to wrinkle out. We, by the end of the, it was an incredibly productive phone call. It reminds me of how great the Scapoo's team is. And we kind of trouble shot through everything. And I think that we certainly have a verbal agreement. Ed, because of some, he's not going to be able to review it for a little while. He's recuperating. But his lawyer seemed quite positive on the language, the proposed language that we set over. So hopefully, that is going well, and will continue to go well, and we'll have a lot of answers for you by the end of September, is when that 90-day period would be over. And even if there were to be some catastrophic thing, like they were to hit sand, and we'd have to bring in new parts, we think, still think the hydrologist can get and make a determination regarding that 70-something number can get them plotted, permitted, moving forward. And then next summer, during the dry season, the idea is, at that point, we do it again, and then just to determine how many credits above the initial 70 or in change that they would get.
Okay. Yes, sir.
Hagen.
I want to follow up on Peter's comments.
Joe, could you move your microphone closer to your?
I'd like to follow up on Peter's comments about water supply. And Alex, he might be able to help with this, too. I understood that the airport development was supposed to produce a well with 300 gallons a minute.
It was 233 gallons per minute.
333.
Well, I think it's producing around 140, so they're needing to make up that difference. And then, of course, the city is looking at developing additional wells. They've been looking at drilling into the salt layer if we can get those water rights. And then do have existing water rights at the Dutch Canyon site, and with hopes of drilling another well there as well.
But this might be a timely discussion with the port here. You know, if there was maybe a collaborative approach to this, where we're, the city's anticipating digging a deep basalt well, which will hopefully produce, you know, good water. You know, sometimes it's flip of the coin. But, you know, if we're supposed to develop 233 gallons a minute for this development, and we're only doing 148, that deficiency, you know, might be an argument for a collaborative approach for a deep well with the port. It's as a kind of a food for thought here.
Sure, and anything's certainly possible. And we have a great working relationship with the staff here. So I won't see why we can't talk about that in the future with them.
Good, thank you.
Wanted to ask, did the Commissioners have any additional comments that they'd like to share before we open it up for questions?
No, I'm very interested in knowing what we can do for you guys. Yeah.
The only comment I'd like to make is we just had our first budget meeting, and staff did a great job preparing a budget for us. And for the second year in a row, we've set our tax rate to zero, which we're very happy to do. And what that should say to people is that the port is being sustainable in its business model. The way that we do business, we're actually bringing in enough money that we can still do all the things, provide all the services that we need to do without taking additional revenue out of the tax base. And I'm very proud of that. I'm very proud of the staff that we've been able to do that. And especially in this time of COVID, where you know that the foot still is dropping, and there's still people that are, you know, having trouble with their finances and their home, you know, behind in their mortgage, whatever. It might only be a little bit of money, but, you know, nothing says thanks like cash. So, you know, the port says, "Thank you to all," and so we give you this money back. The other thing I want to say is that as we did our budget hearing, I was so impressed, and I asked Doug if he would bring that chart, but I think he forgot to bring it. But we've got a pie chart. It shows where all the money comes from in the port district. And fully 43% of all the money the port brings in comes out of Port Westward. And yes, it's a little bit inconvenient when a train goes by with a couple of our cars on it. But I'm just telling you, that's where the bulk of the money is. Tax base comes from there. All the things that we need to attract industry is out there to grow. And so, you know, I just, I like to remind people that, yes, there's a little inconvenience with trains. You know what? They bring a lot of money into this county. And so that's what I wanted to say.
And as far as the tax base, if I just all on here. 24% of all county taxes come from Port Westward, which some folks don't know. As far as money to the port, the next biggest is the airport here. So pretty significant, 27%, I believe, off the top of my head.
And lots of potential you could get.
Oh, absolutely. I've got lots of room, so. And I'll tell you also, this is really interesting, and I don't tell most folks this. The amount of interest in this county and in the port district is significant over the last several months. Just two weeks ago, I received 21 separate phone calls from industries interested here. Now, we understand some of these folks are just tire kickers. They're just trying to see. But out of those 21, I'm still talking to three of them. So that's good. Especially this late.
Mr. Soski.
Doug, thank you for the presentation and the update on how the port is moving forward. I would be curious to know, you highlighted in your challenges the ever or never-ending conversation around traffic congestion. Um, I had read recently that Representative Bonamici's office has been soliciting information from her district on potential transportation improvements within the county or the district as a whole. Has the port had any conversations with her?
I've had several conversations with Bonamici and her staff as early as two years ago, when we first started thinking about this. I've talked to her here in the state. I've talked to her in my trips back to Washington, DC. She is fully aware of this program, absolutely.
And with that, are you indicating the Highway 30 bypass potential?
Well, that was part of, that wasn't the full conversation. That was one of it, one of my trips we talked about. But certainly seeing the need for a bypass or something that actually reaches from 30 at the minimum out to the airport and Ed Freeman's site location would certainly be beneficial to most folks, yes.
And then all I would ask is, those conversations move forward. You know, I think that we're all optimistic that more funding will become available for our infrastructure and be able to move forward on projects like that, that you see that the City of Scapoo's is here as a partner to have those conversations, and that those, that we can have open dialogue, so. And I feel that that trust has already been established, and that relationship is there. But if we can continue on with that collaborative nature in our conversations and our project planning, I find that as being very valuable. So I think having open conversations like we have tonight is a step in that direction. But as those projects start to get potential funding and steam moving forward, that we're all working in unison, hopefully collectively, towards the same.
Absolutely.
I do appreciate the work that the port is doing to create an economic vitality for our community here. And I just do know that, yes, I tell my son when we hear the trains going by, that's the sound of progress. But I also want to ensure that those trains represent the values of our community as well. And I know that you're filtering out those potential opportunities as they come in. So thank you for your good work.
I appreciate it. And I'll tell you, the trains, I know is a very touchy subject. I know it can be very frustrating. I will tell you, the trains, it's sort of like rain. Rain falls on everyone, trains stop everyone. So I've sat at those crossings for over 30 minutes myself. So I know how frustrating it can be. So Hagen.
So have you made any kind of supposition or speculation on how much airport development impact you would get from, or positive impact, economic development from a road that circle, you know, from Havil or wherever, that cuts around the city and goes directly to the airport?
How beneficial it would be, straight to the airport? To be honest, I think it'd be very beneficial, not just to the airport, but for Omic as it develops.
Right.
And also Ed Freeman's property as it develops. I will tell you, I mean, you can have easily up around 500 or more future employees at that site. And I'm lowballing that based upon what industries are very interested in coming here. Now, and Commissioner Ward and I have had this discussion. We're very fortunate, because we can pick and choose who we think is the best fit for this community coming forward. Right? We don't have to grab at the first people that present themselves. We want, we want industries or businesses that are a good fit for this community. All right, and it still brings jobs. It still brings a tax base. It can be done. And we're fortunate that we're in that position right now, that we can do that. And this is something that we certainly look at. We have, I have personally turned down businesses that wanted to come out here, because I knew that they would not be a good fit. I knew that having 30 additional trains a day of soda ash going up the rails would not be good for this community. All right? So we do turn things down that we just don't think is a good fit. And certainly, the ones that are close or questionable, or I need to get a perspective, I bring to my Commissioners, and we talk about it. And it's one of those things of, okay, continue to explore it. Or, yeah, that may not be a good fit, and then we cut it off. So there is a constant communication. Just like I communicate with John Walsh and St. Helens, I communicate with Alex and certainly Mike Sykes before her. So we do keep those lines of communications open. What I don't want to do is ever surprise a city, or certainly my Commissioners, with a potential project that would not be a good fit, would not be beneficial to us. But having that road, circling back to your actual question, yes, it would be very advantageous for you.
Well, Scapoo's wants to beat Westward on revenue for the port.
I would love for you to as well, so.
That's our goal, right?
Now, if you'd like to have a conversation about one of the biggest challenges that the port has is actually on land use laws. That is a significant issue, and it's an issue across the state. And it's something that the port, everyone knows that we're going through a rezone. Since 2012, we've been going through a rezone. We're close to the end. There's one question remaining. It's currently with the county Commissioners. A date has not been set when they're going to deliberate or vote on it. I would anticipate it would be in June. But we'll see. But certainly, this is something that will help to establish an actual solid guideline what it means to rezone, and why you should or could or even would rezone. Okay? It establishes your boundaries, your left and right limits on it. Because currently, there really are none. It's very fluid, and every case is taken in and of itself across the state. I've had this conversation with LCDC, and this is something that, if successful, the port would certainly move forward to the state to try to establish this as the groundwork. This is the standard. Because I think in the long run, most communities would like the ability to rezone if it is beneficial to the community. The one thing that is, one thing that I never underestimate, and I think some people do, you know, especially at certain government agencies. So I've got Commissioners who allow or won't allow for things like rezone to happen. I have Commissioners who listen to the public. And if the public doesn't want something to happen, trust me, the Commissioners aren't going to vote for it. You know, that, just like you have the council members here. You know, this is the opportunity for the public to come and speak their mind, and Commissioners, council members, or what have you, actually listen. I hate to bring up the coal issue from several years ago, because I wasn't here, but I have heard plenty about coal. Okay? It never happened.
I still have a jar.
But that's the proof right there. There was a significant issue with coal going through. Commissioners did listen. Coal is not here. Right? So the system works. It does work. Sometimes it could be frustrating. It works. Okay? So. Anything on land use? Yes, sir.
Paul, when you consider businesses for this area, and you get some kind of, you mentioned 30 trains by this soda ash or something company that wasn't a good idea for our community. And trucks can also be a problem. So do you have an idea of, the business comes in, do they give you an estimate on how many trains will come through our community, and how many trucks will come through our community on a given day or some kind of timeline?
Sure, they do. And it's something that we certainly ask if they don't present it themselves, so.
Is that information provided to, you know, to the cities?
Once we get to a certain point.
Once it gets to a certain point, right. That's, yeah.
So in other words, and understand, too, that for every train that comes through this county, that's taking 180 trucks off the road. That's the equivalency, right? Which is pretty important, right? It's pretty important. So, yes, trains are very important. I mean, God forbid, if we did not have trains, let's multiply all of that to 100, every train, 180 trucks. Right? So rail is a friend of ours. Although sitting at, you know, I did it myself, sitting at a light for 30 minutes waiting to cross, you sometimes forget that. But they are ultimately a friend of ours.
Manifest trains. The unit trains. Because our, we don't have the sidings. I've rode the rail. The unit train covers every single stop in Scapoo, so. That can be glad that we're not having unit trains. They still have them in the future. One of the things I wanted to mention is that I'm on the Scapoo's economic and normally we meet once a month. and normally we meet once a month. Generally, if it's not me, there's one of the, and we let folks know that we know about projects that are coming, say this is what we, taxes are going to be. Almost always have some sort of report for that. And hopefully you guys hear from, on the way up.
Yeah, that's my hope too. I think it's important, we're aware of that. There are a lot of things that people think the city council, we do all these things. A lot of things go right by us. We don't, we're not involved in a lot of things. And the perception is anything that happens in the, in the community is, comes through the city council, just not true. And, but I do think we should be informed of everything, even though we're not necessarily the decision makers on some, some things, so. Yeah, I have some concerns about trains and, but I appreciate the perspective you guys are sharing. And I think I'm reasonable in my perspective. But I also believe that much as business is important, quality of life is also important. Somewhere there's a balance. I get the sense that you're aware of that balance and, but at some point, obviously 30 trains is too many. I don't even know how many trains are coming through town now, you know, but I don't think it's unreasonable what's coming through town now. I think it's very reasonable. And I've never waited more than, to be honest, maybe 10 minutes tops, you know? It seems longer than that for me, but it's not.
I'm assuming that he was in Portland when he got 30 minutes.
Yeah, I know their place in Portland.
When they come through, four to eight. So, and I want to make sure that everybody understands what a huge difference this is a couple of years ago. There are no mani, or there are no unit trains. And the manifest trains are very, very small. And yet you'll see lots of tank cars, but they aren't necessarily going to Port Westward. So those black tank cars no longer all can be identified. Because certainly none of them are crude oil, none of them are ethanol, and there's only four to eight that are going to be renewable diesel. So, yeah, there's a lot of other products involved that are now making up the train traffic.
In other words, they're not anything you guys have control of, is that what you're saying?
Exactly, we don't, we no longer.
We have any control over, yeah.
Yes, and, and we're no longer responsible. You know, before, the decision was ours to allow this. This has changed tremendously. It's all very positive. The fact that renewable diesel has taken the place of both crude oil and ethanol is enormous for, in, in, in the true sense of the word of sustainability. So we're really proud of this. I mean, I think you're probably all aware that the reason I was elected was because of issues with Port Westward. And it's just remarkable to me that this change has happened so quickly and it's so positive.
So, a question on, you think you, who do you think runs the meeting here? I'm just kidding. I was going to follow up on renewable diesel. Is it being just offloaded still? I assume it's going down to California because there's some major contracts with.
That's correct.
ADX and other companies to use renewable diesel.
It's all because of the demand in California.
But with the, looks like the state was looking at mandating renewable diesel in the future. I assume that that's why the discussion of potentially manufacturing. Up in Port Westward, which.
You're referring to the next renewable diesel facility that they are in the process. And just to get, if you're curious, they have submitted permits several months ago. They received permits back. Fewer questions than I even thought were going to come back, so that's a good sign. Timeline is moving rather quickly, although most folks don't see it. A lot of this is behind the, you know, behind the screen type work, and it's moving rather quickly. So much so, I've got Chris Efferd, which is the president, coming out here next week to brief our commissioners, and he's going to bring an actual timeline, a rough timeline, what the next several months are going to look like, so.
Sorry, I was out of town when he came last time.
Manufacturing, they just product out by ship. And, you know, what I was worried about was, wow, we're going to have nothing but train loads of grease going up and down our train tracks, but that's not what they're doing. There might be one or two urgent trains or some, it's not going to choke up our rails. Not going to get a bunch of trucks out of there. It's going to be a whole lot of jobs, a whole lot of tasks. But really, the best of both worlds.
So, but does that dynamic change when it's potentially more for a local service product versus an export product, like down to California? Yeah, oh, I'm just saying that, as, I'm just saying the dynamics change. And not that it's a bad thing, because then there's going to have to be distribution and everything else, so.
And as far as the tax base, we're running rough numbers at the staff. With next renewable is built and this is up and running. We estimate taxes to the county is going to be somewhere around 55% come from Port Westward. Just giving an example. It's pretty, it's pretty big, it's good.
Lori and Chris, I'm just curious if there's anything that we as a council kind of need to be aware of moving forward with working with the port, or if there's concerns that you have as a staff or goals in our relationship or, or projects coming forward. Always just love to hear from, you know, the people in the big work for us. So if Lori or Chris have anything, we'd, I'd love to hear it.
Chris, go ahead if you want to.
Sure. Well, I'd like to say that, you know, we're in the process right now of, of working with Ed Freeman's development team to complete the Phase Three and Four project out there east of the airport. And part of that review includes looping the water line around on Moore Road and completing the Moore Road improvements. And that obviously ties into the, the airport property. So we'll, we'll certainly want to work with, with the port on utilities, you know, along Moore Road there, make sure that there's a, you know, there's good connectivity to their, their site and they, you know, it's, it works for everybody. So, that's all that comes to mind right now.
Yeah, I guess, oh, go ahead.
Well, I know that we did the, it was great, I, I'm, thank you for mentioning the, you know, the water sewer project, because I think that was a great partnership between agencies to get that done. That was a great project. It gives us looped water service, which, which gives everybody a lot better fire flows in that region. And so with the Moore Road connection, that'll, that'll help that even more. And so if there's future hangers that are developed, and there's need for sewer or water, it's certainly going to be available. Go ahead, Lori.
Yeah, and I was just going to add, I would agree with, with Doug Hayes that the, the city staff works really well with the port. We do have monthly meetings as well, one-stop meetings where we just check in with one another along with some other agencies. So that's always helpful too, but no concerns whatsoever. We have a great working relationship.
Thank you.
And trust me, if anything was happening that the staff did not like, I know Alex would be calling my phone in a heartbeat.
I have a question. I've received in the last couple of years some complaints from people who live around the airport and talking about poor etiquette of airplanes, poor etiquette of people. And I'm just wondering if you are hearing the same thing and if there's anything you can tell us that we might be able to do to help out in this situation.
I don't know if you came and spoke prior to your election, but I think the only things that I've heard have come from other sources. I've never heard anything directly. I know that there's been talk about planes flying in the middle of the night and doing the consistent same circles every, every night at 2:00 AM or some, I don't know if you're the one that told us that. Yeah, no, I, I've never heard anything firsthand.
Nor have I.
Okay. And then just recently, I heard a complaint about some illegal activities that go on around Ring-a-Ring Road. And I see you nodding your head, this is something.
Nancy, what I would say is through my conversations with the folks, the residents that live outside the airport, most of them have lived out there long enough to understand that their complaints brought into the city council. We don't have jurisdiction over those areas. And so I think what we usually try to do is help point them in the right direction or those residents have come to find out through time, contacting us, it's just better to go to the source. And so that might be why we don't hear as much as what you would hear to those adjacent property owners. I do know that activity around the dyke is consistently changing and I think it's, it's just an ongoing area. It's obviously off the beaten path around the community. I'm not going to try to make any accusations, but I think that people know that it's, not a lot of eyes are on the streets out there, especially in the after hours, once a lot of the operations have gone offline for the daytime. So I think that there is a good knowledge within the property owners, the residents.
I, I do think though, the unfortunate thing is that both the city, whether you have any jurisdiction or not, it's the perception that you do. And it's the perception that we do. And neither one of us have any control over, especially the activities that go on related to drugs and alcohol and that kind of thing. And it's like, well, this is not being addressed. And it's not being addressed by anybody. And it's not even being talked about. And that's the frustration that I'm getting from the people is they're just, they're fed up. And it's like, I don't know where to send them, you don't know where to send them. What do we do about this? Or do we not do anything?
Guy back there, I don't know if he has an answer.
So, so Ring-a-Ring Road and that obviously is in the county. So it'd be the sheriff's office that would respond to that and take care of it. Anything that's called in, that's just right outside our city, that's occurring, we'll respond to and take, take control until the sheriff gets there and that. So I don't, I don't see the calls where people are calling this stuff in. I think they see it and then they, they talk to somebody else and say, hey, you know, I saw this and that. And it becomes, you know, and then it gets on, you know, concerned citizens and stuff like that. It really push, and our citizens inside Scappus do a really good job of calling things in when they see it. And that's what we want to push out, is to do the same thing in the county and that. Because the sheriff will respond to it and will assist them in any way and that. If they, if their deputies are clear up and class can and have to deal, we'll take the call for them. It's just, just part of business and that to help the community. Because they do, you know, they, they shop inside our city, they use our city. So we consider them as kind of part of that, so we reach out to them also. If they, if you have somebody, they can call me anytime. I'll, I'll give them an answer, point them in the right direction or help get them a solution. That's what we're here for.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, when they're right to me, I'd be more happy to talk to anybody that has a problem that, with that stuff out there, so. You bet.
Yeah, I mean, I live in McCuddy's Marina. And in the last two weeks, we've had four thefts, major. Multiple cars broken into. And, and it's, it's a huge problem. And we, we're not in the city of Scappus either. You know, I'm not, I'm not pointing fingers at the airport, I'm not pointing fingers at anything other than the fact that we have a problem. And, and I'm not sure how we're going to solve it. And it's not going to go away unless we start looking at it and paying attention. And I, I'm not qualified to even know where to start. But I can sure talk about it.
Well, and hopefully talking about it will land on the right ears. I mean, fortunately, you know, when it's outside the city, really the county's jurisdiction. And some people, you know, don't know where that line is either. They say, I have a 97056 zip code, I'm in Scappus. Why aren't you on my ballot? Or, you know, those questions. I've gotten people that have insisted they lived into the city of Scappus, told me what address they're at. I said, no, you live in rural Columbia County, no, my zip code. So, you know, we get that perception that we control everything within the 97056 zip code, so. But, I mean, the most important thing is, like I think Chief said, is that if people aren't calling it in, the police don't know what's happening. And there's no way to investigate. It's, you know, it doesn't just spontaneously happen. They've got to have Ipsor evidence to move forward.
I would ask a question.
When sheriff gets to the port, can he share it, or he share it with you?
He'll keep taking my mic there, if you take care of that. Yes, we, we do, we share information. So the Sheriff Pixley and I actually have met this last month and talk about crimes around Scappus and outside the jurisdiction that are affecting us all and that. So we've, we're already working together on those. The deputies and the patrol that work for Scappus and that, they share information constantly. They're calling each other back and forth and that, and sharing it all the time. You'd be surprised what they know and who they know the players are and, and that. And they put a lot of things together really quick.
Nancy brought up the, the point about the airport and, and issues and so forth. And I, I'm, I'm not entirely sure when, when the runway extension is slated for. The, you know, I think you're planning on a master plan for a thousand-foot extension, is that still in the works?
Yeah, so, so we have the, we have the capability of going out to a 6,000-foot runway. Currently, we're at 5,100 feet. The, the extension is planned within a 20-year airport plan that we have right now. So sometime within 20 years, you know, we have the capability and the approval from the FAA to go out that far. No, no year, no date has been set. I will say that a lot of things would have to happen in order for us to justify it. Building a runway, although it looks very simple, you know, looking at it, you know, standing next to it or on it, is a very robust, a very expensive endeavor. But there is no date set, just sometime within 20 years, we have that capability.
Well, yeah, my, my, my thought there is when, when that starts to get on, on the, on the burner, that, you know, a lot of preemption, because that's going to be a hot issue with, with folks.
You will hear about it, yes. I trust.
So, yeah, so being proactive on that, with, with the city helping and so forth is going to be. Because that's, that's, it almost has to happen with, with the development out there. And probably, you know, depending on how quickly that materializes, it's probably going to happen sooner than later. But anyway, so I'm, I'm glad you're, you're, you're thinking about that. And, because that will be, have a major impact on, on that part of town.
Absolutely, you know, the part of, you know, a lot of this is solved by communication. So, you know, I guess it was about, what, a year and a half ago? A year and a half ago, we had some folks visit us about the airport noise. And, and what they were telling us at the time was that they were new to the city for the most part. And their real estate agent was telling them that, yes, there is a city ordinance, noise ordinance at certain times, so everything should be quiet. The challenge there is that there is no such ordinance placed on an FAA airport that can't do that now.
Train? Those are going off.
Or train, right. But we reached out to some of these real estate agents after the fact to, to explain, yeah, to explain it to them. So they better understood. Because sometimes they just didn't know, they, they didn't realize that. So now that's cleared up and we haven't had a complaint since, knock on wood. But yeah, it's about that communication.
There were just a bunch of them on Facebook this weekend.
I remember one family that came and talked with us. They had lived out there long before. They said that it was just recent that all the places happened. There was really only one thing that had changed while they'd been living here, that's a new road gone there. And trees had been taken down in order to make that road. And so I'm, I'm feeling that there was a certain amount of buffer that was. And so I'm, I'm feeling that there was a certain amount of buffer that was there that's just not there anymore. Maybe the road reflects the noise a little bit more or something. But it did, but it is different. But that's always the challenge with development. And, uh, but, you know, I was really proud of our staff when they, because they actually went out and met with these realtors and, and said, this is the deal, don't say otherwise. Because, you know, you'll get the calls and we'll get the calls, but it was really their fault for giving that information out.
It's not the first time I've heard bad information being gave, given by realtors. The goodwill went in, I got people that lived over there that said their realtors had told them that land would never be developed. And of course, I just looked at them and said, well, your realtor lied to you. Because at that point, it's. They, either they lied or purposely misleading to me, and just like, somebody's going to develop their property if they can. And then, I think with the airport, with the homes under the runway, Lori?
Yes.
Don't those homes have something in their, when they're built, about being in a airport takeoff area?
That, um, I haven't processed any subdivision or land use applications directly, you know, within the runway protection zone, because that protection zone actually ends prior to the new road that was put in. Um, also, a lot of those properties that border that, that northern area there, where the new road was put in, and the trail property are still in the county, so I don't really process those applications. But, um, I, you know, honestly, to my knowledge, I don't know that they have something in their, you know, in their documents.
I was just, I mean, this is an old memory, but I was under the impression that, like, the Miller Road developments back there, documents had something in there about being so close to the airport.
It's possible, it's entirely possible.
And, and there are certain rules and regulations that we do abide by. So the approach and the departure zones for the runway, they're, they're fanned out forty-five degrees from the runway, and they stretch as far as the fence. That's why the fence is there where it's there. So we meet those requirements from the FAA. Anything beyond that, um, certainly is city's responsibility. For instance, let's say hypothetically, someone wanted to build a five-story building just outside that fence. Well, that's where communication comes in, and we would advise not doing that, although we couldn't tell you not to, right? So.
I think our code allow it, that close to the airport. Think.
That is a concern I, I've had ever since, I guess it's been about. Talking about changing the API for Global, and we had. Scappus. Senator, somebody came and the community members, they're like, well, you got schools right there, and you got houses. And I'm, I'm, I know, but the city is actually approving of putting that school that close to the railroad. And the school, the city just approved a bunch of apartments that close to the railroad. And that concerns me, for building things that close to a railroad that has a potential issue. And so I, I, I'm just curious how that happens.
Well, it's. If a property is zoned some way, it's, you know, and there's speed restrictions through town, it's for the railroad.
That'd be a little position, but it is kind of interesting. I know that when the folks start moving into that apartment, the trains go through, even though most of them won't be for the port, we will get the calls.
Well, you know, one of the things I do know is that, I mean, if you, Pat Kessie used to be on the council, and he built a building in Portland, right off Twentieth and Multnomah, right on I-84. One, one of the things he told me, and I did the tour of his place when he had a grand opening celebration, and when you were in that building with the windows closed, you could not hear I-84 or the trains that went right by that building. You opened up the window, you could hear it. So modern construction does allow for a soundproofing of these structures that is quite impressive. And just being on eighty-four during rush hour, I think you can understand that that's a lot of noise. And for you to be sitting in one of these windows that are overlooking that high freeway and not hear it, is pretty impressive in itself.
Well, just another example of why land use laws are so critical. You know, if, if they're a lot easily defined and easier to do and manage, we probably wouldn't have issues like that, because then the schools would have different options to actually build away from things like that.
Well, you know, they built the high school, and it was just timber going down the road. All right, anything else? We've got about five minutes before the regular council meeting, so.
Mr. Mayor, I, I just wanna extend, I think behalf of all of us, I'll thank you for you being here tonight. And also thank you for your support of Centennial Celebration, and we trust you will, you will participate and enjoy the event as much as everyone else.
I plan to be in there personally.
Thank you.
Yes, sir.
Just thank you for coming. Mr. Erickson, Commissioner Ward, thank you for spending the time and updating us. This is good. Thank you.
Thank you.
Great report, thank you.
So are your regular meetings, are they open to the public now, or are you still doing them on Zoom?
Well, we're, obviously, we're meeting live, we're here, uh, as we see the updates from the governor's office. And as things change.
We're not allowing extra individuals to sit in.
Not yet.
So like tonight, you won't have people from, okay.
Not yet.
You guys are welcome to.
Thank you.
And, and we have quite a strong feeling that they'll be changing to evening meetings, so it might make it easier.
Yeah. Thank you so much.
All right, our work session is adj, over.